All right, it's the Monday, July 23rd, 2012. South Bend Council meeting. Round session. Round twenty, please.
Let's pray. Lord God, we just come this evening and first we just want to thank you for giving us all the privilege to live in a nation, a republic, where we get to select those who govern over it, govern over us. And, Lord, this evening, we just wanted to remember the victims and the families in Aurora, Colorado. We pray for that grace that you say is sufficient to bring the comfort to that community and to the families and the victims that they still need. And, Lord, I pray for this city, that you would keep a tragedy like that from happening here. I thank you for the police officers, the firemen, the EMTs, the men and women, who put their lives on the line to protect us. And, Lord, I pray that this evening, that you would protect all of them. And, Lord God, we just pray for this evening's meeting, that it would just all be done in order, and we just pray that in Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible)
Mr. Wardy, turn on the official station. That after that, you may reach the wall. Let us know how it is. We'll be okay. Mr. Scott, here. Mr. Henry Davis, ready to start. Mrs. Shea, here. Dr. Furley, here. Dr. Varner, present. Vice President Oliver Davis, present. Councilmember White, present. Mr. Furley, here. President Dieter, present. Mr. Wardy, nine present. May we have a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the July 9th, 2012, meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Derek Dieter, David Varner.
Motion approved. Second. Motion taken on the day or time in opposition. Mr. Wardy, go ahead.
One special thing, I would like to make a notice to say that the E and the Commission for Social Status of Black Male, we are now accepting applications and first round, we will be accepting those applications until, um, no, August 10th will be the deadline for the application of the E and Commission for Social Status of Black Male. We had our induction three, uh, for meeting, uh, Monday in San Antonio, so this is progression. There will be some appointments made from the mayor's office and some other places, Lord Council, but we definitely need the applications to be filled out by the community at large, and anyone and everyone is invited to obviously fill out an application. You can get into the first call before online, uh, to serve as like a essential member of the committee, send an application.
You have to be a senior resident? Yeah. How you doing? Mr. Wardy, Resolution 1264. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, congratulating Al Buddy Cursis for an exemplary public service career of thirty-two years of dedicated service to the South Bend Fire Department and twelve years of impeccable service on the South Bend Common Council. Alfred, from your family.
Alfred or Buddy?
Alfred, the man.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, congratulating Al Buddy Cursis for an exemplary public service career of thirty-two years of dedicated service on the South Bend Fire Department and twelve years of impeccable service on the South Bend Common Council. Whereas, the South Bend Common Council is extremely proud to publicly honor Al Buddy Cursis, who will long be remembered for setting the bar at the highest level on the South Bend Fire Department where he tirelessly served for the past thirty-two years, having been officially sworn in on November 27th, 1979, and following a family tradition of dedicated fire service which began with Buddy's father and grandfather. Whereas, the Common Council is also proud of knowledge that Buddy served for twelve years on the South Bend Common Council, as council member at large, who is a champion for the rights of city residents, and always brought a keen public safety perspective to discussions and deliberations. Whereas, there are countless stories which reflect Buddy's true commitment to public service, his unrelenting pursuit of excellence, and his compassion for always going that extra mile, with one of the best examples being when Buddy met an ambulance at St. Joseph's Hospital well after midnight, which had traveled nonstop from Tennessee one cold and snowy night, and after the special patient was admitted, took the Tennessee firefighters and paramedics on a tour of Fire Station Number Two, where Buddy served as battalion chief, and a tour of Notre Dame Fire Services, which will always be remembered by them and a family with their grateful hearts. Whereas, the Council notes that Buddy probably has many keen and insightful comments about his decision to exercise his rights under the State of Indiana's quote "Flop" end of quote program, partial lump sum option payment, which may work their way into comments on retirement. And, whereas, the Council notes that on June 28th, 2012, the South Bend Tribune entitled, quote, "Long Term Fire by Indian Fire Hanging Up His Helmet," did not mention that reliable sources have confirmed that the bandages on Buddy's right arm, shown in the Tribune's picture, were in fact from recent carpal tunnel surgery, which Buddy had to relieve pressure on the median nerve, which supplies feeling and movement to parts of the hand, and often leads to numbness, tingling, weakness, or muscle damage in the hands and fingers, a common problem of anglers, especially those who study the foraging habits of fish in Minnesota and Donnell Lake. Now, therefore, be resolved that Common Council City of South Bend is followed. Section one, on behalf of the citizens of the City of South Bend, Indiana, the Common Council is pleased to publicly honor Al Buddy Cursis for his great public service career with South Bend. Section two, the Common Council thanks Buddy for his service, his humor, and his passion to always do the right thing, and knows that Jonathan Cursis, who was sworn in on April 13th, 2011, will follow in his dad's footsteps. May the fish always be by your view, Buddy, and may you, Mary, Jonathan, Kyle, and Hannah, continue to have great and memorable moments together, which are filled with much love and smiles. Section three, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Council and approval by the mayor.
Thank you very much. The comments from council members, we will start with Mr. Scott.
Congratulations, Buddy. Good luck fishing. Better luck fishing than the shirt you have on. Years ago, probably one of the first times that I ever came before council of the City of South Bend, and we were working on an issue in our neighborhood, and I think we did a pretty good job presenting our case, and Buddy, you were the only one that kind of stood up and said, "Wait a minute, these people have a problem." So, I always remember that, and I appreciated that from day one, and was happy to have you a at-large council member for us, and many of our neighbors still ask about me. So, thank you so much.
Buddy, we miss you very much.
You're always used to the joke about, well, really was a joke, a comic that you wanted to make that back of what your claim was. I went to IU and I got my master's in public administration, but they thought, uh, it was always that whole thing at IU, you know? I really appreciate it, and so, you know, trying to still hear the echo back in the room, but definitely you're, you're surely, you are, you know, the president, and the guy you brought to the council while you served, but I know your wife and your daughter are like really, really, really excited to get back home, or maybe not. But again, thanks for your service to the community, and I always hope that I can serve the community that what you have in the following years that you've served.
Buddy, in a conversation that you and I had had probably about two years ago, you were just talking about how some of your friends after college were making different career choices, and some of your friends went on to be real estate moguls and what have you, but you chose to come back home and serve the city, and I want to say thank you very much for making that choice. You've been a very instrumental role model for many people through your service, and I am thankful for everything that you've done for our city.
Thank you. Dr. Varner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Buddy, I appreciate those twelve years we spent together, it was a lot of fun. I look forward to seeing you out on the south side of town a little more often now, which will be good, we'll enjoy that, and I want you to know that we always knew that, even when we didn't agree, Buddy was pursuing his points, others were pursuing theirs, and you always were interested in it, regardless of how it turned out in fashion, but it was very much you and very much positive, so I appreciate all of that. I think that made us a better council, and I think you're an example for the community. Thank you, Buddy, that was very important.
Buddy, it's been a pleasure knowing you, and with you these last four years, I've learned a lot now that I'm the new chair of the zoning, and I'm trying to follow, and one of the things I've always appreciated about you is the way you've always let out in promoting your daughter, and you're running out two different events and running back and forth, and way and back and forth, and from a father of daughters, it's nice to see that, the way you've always put her part of your whole campaign, and I've learned a lot, and I was surprised because that's with my own, so I appreciate it.
Thanks for your service, congratulations, and enjoy retirement.
Well, Buddy, what can I say? I've had the pleasure of meeting you twelve years. I heard about you. You were the firefighter that somehow the news and media always knew where to be, where you would be tashing in to save a life. Twelve years ago, I had the opportunity to really get to know you when you were campaigning, and for twelve years, I had the opportunity to sit next to you. It's been a real joy getting to know you. I respect you, I respect your compassion, your commitment to the city. Twelve years ago, I had the opportunity to meet one of the toughest campaign managers ever, and that was your daughter, Cam, and so again, I would say thank you, thank you, thank you for what you've done, not only for the South Bend Common Council, but being a member of the firefighter for the city, and we expect to continue to read about you as a South Bend Tribune, continue to follow you as you dash into the home to save lives. Thank you so much.
Well, I don't, is that my camera?
Very personally, Buddy, I've been trying to express my heartfelt feelings for the resolution, and I also want to thank being part of the family, supporting Buddy to which he has to do.
I just think that your mom and dad would be proud, and a good Hungarian upbringing, that compassion for people, and that's, I think, part of what drew you to public service, and you certainly were the embodiment of that during your years of service. Al Buddy. I have the privilege of serving and learning from you on the council, but the advantage that I have and the job I have, I've just been able to see Buddy in action on the streets, doing what he loves to do, and this community has been very lucky over the course of his career to have such a dedicated, in my mind, a square and square guy that knows what to do, his intensity and his focus. When you did the fires, I don't want to run into burning buildings, but him and all firemen I've seen them do that, I've seen Buddy jump in the rivers and seen safe people, I've seen them go in a burning house, pull the guy out, surprise me right before the election, Buddy saved a man. Buddy and all, Buddy and I, we've kidded a lot in regards to firemen with cable TVs and policemen allegedly eating donuts and so on, but again, I think in addition to everything that you've done for the community, you've become the face of Indiana River Rescue, known across the country as the best river rescue school in the country, and the hundreds of people have come here and learned from somebody on what to do properly and save lives when people end up in a river situation, it has been phenomenal. But the other things that people probably don't know about you, and I won't go that way, but the other stuff is all the community things that he has done where he lives in his neighborhood, Buddy patrols in his own car in his neighborhood, he'll call when there's somebody in the alley, all the countless thousands of hours that he has driven to the Holy Cross and the Holy Cross community, coaching kids in football, coaching girls in softball, everything he's done at Set Wagon, literally, has just been phenomenal just for everybody in the house. I appreciate all the good stuff, and I wish you well in your new, pretty nice kid there. Congratulations, that's a great place to be for you, so again, I'm proud to have served with you and worked with you on the council, and probably been on the street with you for all these years, so good luck, and I appreciate everything you guys have done for our city.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Again, my friends on the council, Mayor Fordy, just the city clerk's staff, thank you very much. This isn't necessary, but it feels good. I want to thank my wife and family, it's been a lot of fun, I wish I could do it again. I accept this, though, a lot of my mentors are gone, you know, a lot of guys all died of cancer, it seems like, when I look back at some of the great guys I got to serve with, but Dr. Furley, I hope I don't have to do a cold page here for the check, but I want to thank you, it's been fun, it's been a great thing. Maybe the one thing, my wife has said to me that, and my daughter, that was when I left the council, we got our dad back, you don't look so stressful, and recently now, with my new job, they say I look more refreshed. So, my advice to my council friends, you have a very tough job, people don't know it, with the pressure that goes on their shoulders and everything, and don't let the pressure get to you, hang in there, do some for yourselves, and keep helping the city out. Thank you very much.
Anyone like to speak in favor of this?
Mayor Pete Buttigieg, with offices on the 14th floor of this building. It's my pleasure to rise in favor of this resolution. I think I've said in the past that if you're to look up the phrase "public servant" in the dictionary, you would expect to see a picture of Buddy right there, and you serve as both as a public safety officer and as an elected official. I've known of you ever since I asked my mother what to deal with the old fire truck at the end of Market Avenue was, and I've come to very much admire you, and even though you appear disguised in the uniform of the retiree, we know that you're by no means done with service to this community, and we're going to count on you as a friend, a neighbor, and a community servant for many years to come.
Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Steve Pax, Fire Chief, South Bend Fire Department, 1220 South Michigan Street. Mr. President, members of the council, I also want to speak in favor of this resolution. Chief Cursis has been a mentor to countless people in the South Bend Fire Department. He's been a model of excellence, strategically, tactically, unbelievably sound individual. Everybody at the Fire Department has looked up to him and has looked up to him for years. I owe myself getting on the Fire Department to Chief Cursis as well, back when I was in the Army, he actually went ahead and contacted me while I was at Fort Campbell, Kentucky, and managed to get me an application and everything, and I managed to get it here just because of him. I stand here as a member of the Fire Department, representing all 251 members, saying that we wish Chief Cursis excellence in retirement, although he's not really retired at this point, so I'm hesitating to say any retirement, but we've all learned to be better people, better firefighters, and better citizens because of our experiences with town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're not going to have any negative comments, so may I have a presentation? Do I have to move the resolution forward? All in favor? All right. All right. Do you have any more? I don't know. Okay. Now, we have reports from the city offices.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide monthly updates on recent administration activities and upcoming priorities. Want to begin by mentioning that we have the budget process in full swing, of course. Departments are working hard to assemble data the green eye shades are out, we're going to have a lot of work ahead of us, because we don't expect the top line to be going up much, and we all know how many priorities we all care about for the city, but very much looking forward to the first formal session of the council to sink our teeth into budget affairs on Wednesday as part of the ongoing collaborative budget process. I know there's been interest in key positions in the administration, wanted to give you an update on that. Please to let you know that in both the Department of Public Works and Legal Department, we have strong candidates identified, and think we'll be moving to send offers to potential departments very soon. The Police Department search will not happen as quickly as the others, that is a search that we've come to believe really depends on having public input for its success, and so we're going to work to make sure that this process is thorough, and that this process incorporates public input as much as possible. We have an upcoming mayor's night out, this one's going to be in the 5th District at the O'Brien Center. Dr. Varner, looking forward to being there with you, that's Wednesday at 5:30, open to public, and we encourage all council members who can make it to come on over and make sure we have department heads there as well. We recently had the United Way kickoff, and the city is a great participant, this is news to me, may come as news to some fellow newly-elected officials, but the city has contributed, and this is city employees totally, $899,000 so far in the United Way campaigns over the years. I'm especially pleased to note that that participation level, which is so important, we've had 466 employees participate last year, that's almost a 40% participation rate, and that's grown very steadily over the years, and I hope all of us will do our part to make sure that we're participating and encouraging others to do so. It's a great chance to come at so many community issues, income-related issues, health and education, through United Way and their good work. The graffiti team, I want to give you an update on that, got a little bit of data back from the team overseen by the Parks Department. They addressed 538 reports of graffiti in the last six months, or the first six months of the year. 453 of those were residential or business properties, and other 30 were public sites, as well as 55 public parks, and really has been distributed across the city, although some districts are more concentrated when it comes to the appearance of graffiti. We saw 32 sites addressed in the 1st District, 62 in the 2nd District, 88 in the 3rd District, 28 in the 4th District, 23 in the 5th District, and 170 addressed in the 6th District. I am pleased to note that the rate of re-tagging is below 10%, and I gather that that's considered to be a good ratio relative to what you would expect to see nationally, so appreciate the hard work of the Parks Department on that. We continue to encourage police officers to really adopt ownership of the beats that they work in, that includes walking patrols, made a perhaps a mistake in selecting the hottest day so far in our heat wave, to do a patrol myself with some of our officers recently, but it was very impressive to see them out on the beats, and would encourage you to consider doing the same to encourage that. Appreciate the opportunity upcoming to work with the council on potentially creating a position to address youth engagement, so that we can make sure that we're doing everything we can to be proactive about violence in the community. I don't come off as too impatient in this regard, but want to make sure we don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, as we work to make sure that we have a comprehensive solution built into our budget for next year, but don't waste the opportunity to act sooner rather than later in some way. Also, coming up on our legislative agenda, we're hoping to have updates in the Community and Economic Development Department, including a new name for the department, which we'd like to call the Community Investment Department, and we'll be approaching the council with a proposal that is budget neutral but would update titles to reflect the new organization we envision, enabling that department to have a planning function as well as a business development group, an analytics group that can do due diligence on incoming deals, a neighborhood group and an administration finance group. We'll provide more detail in the cover letter to council as we submit this, but certainly encourage you to contact the offline if you'd like a personal briefing ahead of that on what it is we envision. The 3-1-1 team is hard at work, you'll remember that promise to the public that we would deliver a 3-1-1 system by the end of the year, and at least in prototype form, we are on track to do that. The idea is not only to improve our capacity to take and handle phone calls, but also to capture data, making it possible to make better decisions as managers. That's one of the priorities that we'll be bringing into the processes we think about government for next year, and think it will really pay off over the long run, but will certainly require us to think about some city processes differently, especially when it comes to how citizens get a hold of us in our departments. And similarly, we have a team working on process improvement, a really outstanding team that's interested in taking a look at some of the processes that are most common when it comes to citizens coming to the administration, coming to the government, looking for something. What are the top 25 things that citizens need, and can we map out those processes and look for opportunities to do them faster, better, cheaper? And that team is grinding away, and looking forward to reviewing their work, and after that, I certainly look forward to sharing that work. That concludes my update, but happy to hear if there are any other priorities that the council would be interested in more data or information on by the time I come up here for the next report to city offices. Thank you.
Any questions?
I just have one. I had an opportunity to go out to a crime since Saturday, and thereafter was able to pick up some officers, not particularly there, but thereafter, and it's increasingly evident that the morale of the police force has gone down considerably since the motion of former Chief Wexler, and as a result of that, the trust that citizens have, police officers now, has related to the issue that happened Saturday, Sunday night, Sunday morning, Saturday night, with the young man on the path, there is like this huge feeling that we can't trust the South Bend Police Department, but you have employees who are not really happy about this job that we're doing, and then you have the citizens not trusting, which is a perfect storm situation, and I don't, and want to probably say it has a lot to do with what happened back in February and March with the tape, and we haven't heard anything up about them, we haven't got any feedback from the Attorney General, the Justice Institute, federal courts, and I would just implore you to look at those campaigns and to make a decision on how we could boost the morale of the police force and also the trust of the community and police team. When our citizens don't trust police officers, there is this rule on the street, no snitching, but if we have a situation where everyone draws back, and just not the people who is believing no snitching, you're going to be in a situation where nothing will get done, and there'll be a war against our police officers, and also the residents who, you know, obviously was probably trying to play a war, so I'm saying that, looking for some sort of plan, I don't know if it comes from you, or Interim Chief Chuck Hurley, but I think it needs to really be addressed, and this is coming from you. When our citizens don't trust police officers, sorry, that's a rule on the street, no snitching. But if we have a situation where everyone draws back and just not the people who is believing no snitching, you're going to be in a situation where nothing will get done. And there'll be a war against our police officers and also the residents who, you know, obviously was probably trying to play a role. So I'm saying that we're looking for some sort of plan. I don't know if it comes from you or Interim Chief Chuck Hurley, but I think it needs to really be addressed, and this is coming from the common folk and some of the workers that are on the police force.
I can give you some update on the matter with the tapes. As you know, we refer them to the Assistant Attorney General in charge of Civil Rights at the Department of Justice. We also felt that it's been a while since we've heard anything, so a letter's been prepared and gone out to the Assistant Attorney General asking for an update. When it comes to the level of confidence that people have in police, I think it takes a lot of things at once. It's certainly one of the primary motivations for the program to encourage officers to spend time out of the cars, on the streets, really getting to know people. And I think as we move increasingly toward a philosophy of what's called being ownership, we'll have a chance to build up those relationships to trust. Certainly share your concern that the police officers have the best morale possible. I think the best thing we can do is make sure that they have good leadership. Police officers I spend time with are professionals, they care about their work, and I know they care much more about their work than they do about politics. I think all of us owe it to them to do everything we can to make sure they don't feel that their work is political football, and the better job we all do is that. I hope the better contribution that will be to their morale. Thank you for raising those issues.
There, could you kind of give us one more detail on the search for a new police chief? Were you guys thinking strategy-wise also timeline, if there was a delay?
I didn't mean to say there's a delay as much as that that's a process that will certainly take longer to lead to a hire than the Public Works or the Legal Department process. I will say that I think it's likely to extend into the fall in order for us to do it right. It's so important partly for the reasons that were just mentioned, the importance of trust for the community in the police department, to make sure that this is a search that includes adequate level of public input. So we're initiating a process that will continue to unfold, and one of the first tangible signs today you'll see is when we're able to schedule a public or town hall meeting, which make it possible to take in community priorities, which should be part of the criteria. You know, there's so many different things we look for in police leadership, but it's very important, I think, to get that directly from the citizens in addition to in consultation with key community stakeholders, elected officials, council, certainly among them, and also interviews with officers themselves to find out what qualities of leadership they're looking for. I believe that we also need to make sure that there's some exposure, some way to make sure that there's consultation by the time we have finalists with people who can weigh in and provide good advice on that matter. And getting that process right unfortunately does take time. So while we certainly aim to have an offer extended by the end of the year, while I was saying late summer, early fall, I'm now thinking fall is really when we're going to be looking.
And this is a complete internal process with internal personnel to put together the strategy?
Well, certainly, any input is welcome, but and having ruled out engaging outside council, just to talk to folks who have done this, you know, some people help communities select police chiefs who are living. Obviously, we don't think the answers come from outside the community, but if there are any best practices or any knowledge, any access to a wide pool of candidates, or even just some expertise on how to make sure we facilitate the best possible community process, I certainly wouldn't rule out engaging outside help.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Before we resolve with committee, hold us two agenda items tonight, and they will be continued, so if you are here to speak on behalf of being interested in those. Number one is 2612, and that will be continued to 813. The other is 2412, which will be continued in depth.
Hey, I'm motion. Is all the committee is on?
Hello.
Second.
On favor of that.
Hi.
In the opposition.
The committee of the whole is now in session. This is a portion of the council meeting where bills are given a second and public hearing. Move governing this portion of the committee, the council meeting is available on the table in front of you. At this time, I would ask City Clerk John Wardy to give a second reading to Bill 29-1.
Public hearing on a bill to vacate the following described property. The first north-south alley west of Michigan Street from Madison Street north to the first east-west alley and the first east-west alley north of Madison Street, beginning six feet west of the first north-south alley west of Michigan Street to the West Michigan Street right of way.
Is there a committee report?
The county boards of property vacation committee has public hearing on Bill 29-12 this afternoon. They come to the committee, to the council, from the committee to handle it.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? We do ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, please, for the record.
James Liffson. I work for DLV 2211 East Jefferson Boulevard, South Bend, Indiana.
Could you give us a brief overview of the bill that's before us?
I would like to request a continuance until the next city council meeting.
And the petitioner has requested a continuation until the next council meeting, which will be August 13th. If you're moving second, is all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Both opposed, the motion carries. So this bill will be continued for August 13th as requested by the petitioner. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wardy, will you please give a second reading to Bill 31-12?
Public hearing on a bill to vacate the following described property. The first east-west alley north of the south street from Hill Street West to the first north-south alley.
Is there a committee report?
The county boards of property vacation committee has public hearing on Bill 31-12. She'll come to the city council to pay her recommendation.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present? We ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address. Brief overview of the situation.
Joseph Kelchin. I reside at 1007 North Francis Street here in South Bend.
Could you give us a brief overview of your quest, please?
Sure. It's described, it's an alley that's remained dormant for several decades. It's located on Francis Street. There were three pieces of property I purchased in June, addresses 321 North Hill Street, 319, and 317. This alley runs through it, and I'd like to see it vacated for future use.
Thank you. Councilmember, do you have any questions of the petitioner? Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Chairperson White. Do you have any plans for that at this point?
No, no immediate plans at this time, no.
Thank you, I'll see what's going on.
Great.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to the public portion of our meeting. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor of Bill 31-12? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed.
With a favorable recommendation, second?
As we move in second, is that all those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Bill 31-12 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Wardy, will you please give a second reading to Bill 19-12?
Public hearing on a bill of the Town and Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana. Amending chapter 21 of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article 9, Administration, Section 21-09.05, Development Review Procedures in order to add new Section H, Combined Public Hearing Procedure.
Thank you. Is that a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair. The County Administration Committee met this afternoon to agree with guilty floor council with a favorable report.
Thank you. Petitioner, would you ask to state your name and address, please?
Kristina Nader with the Area Planning Commission, offices on the 11th floor. This is an area planning commission initiated text amendment to add the new section for combined public hearing procedure. Currently, we have four processes petitioners could go through. They are rezoning, subdivision, special exception, and variances. Currently, rezonings are handled through the Area Planning Commission and then come before the council. Subdivisions are handled just by the Area Planning Commission. Special exceptions are handled by the Board of Zoning Appeals and then before the county or the Town and Council, and variances are handled by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The state law changed last year, and allowed this combined hearing to happen. In the case where there is first a rezoning and there are possibly a subdivision, variances, or special exception also needed, the petitioner could choose to go through the combined public hearing. That would cut down on the number of meetings that both the petitioner and the public would have to attend, cut down on paperwork, letters, and things we send out to surrounding property owners. Does come to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Planning Commission, again, just to make the process a little bit more streamlined.
Thank you. Councilmember, do you have any questions at this time? Thank you. Well, now I'll move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in behalf of Bill 19-12? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed. I maintain a motion regarding Bill 19-12.
With a favorable recommendation, second?
As we move in second, is all those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Both opposed, the motion carries. Bill 19-12 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Wardy, will you please give a second reading to Bill 30-12?
Public hearing on a bill of the Town and Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating an additional $100,000 in City General Fund Number 101 Code Enforcement Department for illegal dumping cleanup activities to be performed by Solid Waste Department and reimbursed from General Fund 101 to Solid Waste Operating Fund 610 in 2012.
Yes, the First and Finance Committee held a committee meeting, public hearing on Bill 30-12. We send this bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Reduce the present standing desire, request that you state your name and address, and give us a summary of this bill.
Captain Tappel, Director of Code Enforcement, offices at 1300 County City Building, South Bend, Indiana. Thank you, Councilor. I'm here to report you tonight to request an additional $100,000 for the illegal dumping crew, which will then take the crew through the end of December of this year. You may recall in November of 2011, we requested $60,000 to put this crew together through the end of last year. At that time, as the council wished that this program continue, and we came back before the council again in January, and you were kind enough to approve an additional $140,000. We are in middle of budget season for 2013. We're looking right now for $100,000, which will cover approximately $45,000 in personnel fees through the end of the year, plus an additional $45,000 for what we call the dumping fees, in addition to any small tools and repairs that might be needed through the end of this year. We do anticipate addressing this program through the budget process for 2013, during that entire budget process which begins Wednesday. Currently, we have removed 4,421,000 pounds of trash from the neighborhoods in eight months. It works out to approximately 12,000 up to 10. We've performed approximately 2,040 cleanups, of which 673 of them were illegal dump sites. Others were along the alleys. We started going through each and every alley and street to make sure all the debris had been removed as we began this program. We do remove about 3.3 tons of debris per day, excuse me, per load that goes to the dump. It's that's why some of these numbers may drop as the year continues because we are starting to investigate illegal dumping and trying to hold the violators responsible. However, we would not want to shortchange the program in case there is a lot of items that we do need to remove. The dumping fee does become quite high. We are taking all of the debris to green chat transfer on Franklin Street, so everything that's being recycled does need to be.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Councilmember?
I'd just like to, Madam Chair, be saying that we are very pleased. I went to a one village neighborhood meeting, and we have talked about the progress of how the whole legal dumping has been a success out in our district. The mayor talked about the graffiti and cleaning up, and so when you look at the graffiti program and the legal dumping program all working together, it's really helping to clean up our city. I've seen Mr. Crumpley, our city generator, and when he's came by cleaning up there, he's now again. And so this is really helping to make the city, so I'm pleased to be voting positively for this extra month, and like we said earlier, just sure we can make sure this is a part of a full budget next year and, you know, whatever we can we talk about earlier today.
Thank you. If I could add, I do have my Chief Inspector Brian Haygood here. He has done himself a great job in the supervision of this crew and making sure that the work gets done.
Anything else I want to say? Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Scott?
Yes, I just want to concur with, Councilman Davis has said, the 1st District, I get a lot of positive feedback on this program. They're really thanking the city that worked to take care of this, and we do have a lot of illegal dump sites there, and everybody wants, how are we going to take care of it? So, in, as we said, committee, I hope we look for proactive solutions to try to catch some of these people and prosecute them.
Do you have a question? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move to our public hearing. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in behalf of Bill 30-12? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed.
With a favorable recommendation, second?
As we move in second, is all those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Both opposed, the motion carries. Good night.
Thank you. Can I have a, is there a motion on your? Sure. So, 2612 will be continued to 813.
Second. As we move in second, is that Bill 26-12, as requested by the petitioner, will be continued until August 13th? All those in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Wardy, will you please give a second reading to Bill 20-12?
Public hearing on a bill of the Town and Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter 2, Article 8 by the inclusion of new Section 2-125.1 of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing whistleblower protection.
I think I now would like to indicate a motion successful privacy version of the bill.
Go ahead.
As we move in second, is all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, the motion carries. We do have two of the presenters that are before us. We ask that you state your name and address. We have just a brief summary of such a field 20-12.
Councilman Henry Davis Jr., 5117 Ottawa Drive, South Bend, Indiana.
Councilman Tim Scott, 711 Forest Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
Before we, council members, my colleagues, you have an urgent address in whistleblower as this is an action that the state allows us to do, and as it was a response to a matter that happened a few months ago, involved in a police officer and a county officer. And so we wanted to make sure, not with a knee-jerk reaction, but make sure that all city employees are protected from retaliation when making reports or making complaints or what have you about those they work with. And this is what you have before you, and we ask that you adopt this favorably.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
And I'd just like to add, I think this is a great step for the city. This gives us employees, employees of the city, and the HR department improvement in coverage and protection for them.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Furley?
I just want to say thank you to Councilman Scott, Councilman Davis, Councilman Dieter, Councilman White, as well as Kathy and Aladeen and the administration. They all worked together to put this together and did a fantastic job, and I think collaboration is always the way to accomplish things best, and I think it's outstanding the way it was done, so congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Dieter?
If I could get our council attorney to clarify in regards to city employees, if this is adopted later, we have to go to the board of safety before we're pertaining to police officers or firefighters.
Right, because of the state law, sure measures of the state department are definitely for safety. Therefore, it is by understanding that if the council is charged and if their, the mayor signs that, several others in council may be sending this as a model to use for the board of safety and programs.
Are there any additional questions from councilmembers? At this time, we'll move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor of public view Bill 20-12? We do ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address, please. and address, please.
Jesse Davis, thirteen thirty-three East Calvert Street, South Bend. Um, I think this, although I haven't had a chance to see the, uh, the new version of it, but, uh, I knew they were working on some changes on it. Um, we need to make sure that everybody in our city is protected, not just the employees, but if you have citizens that come forward with issues, that they also are not retaliated against. I don't, I don't know if this really covers them or not, but there's not really any avenues for citizens to, uh, you know, come forward and say, hey, you know, I'm being harassed, or there's a problem with a city employee can, uh, be protected. Uh, you, citizens can be threatened and, uh, harassed just as much as city employees or police officers, but we need to make sure we're keeping everybody safe within our, uh, city boundaries.
Thank you.
Reverend Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight dime in South Bend, Indiana. Uh, I'm in highly favor of this, because being a reverend in this community and talking to a lot of people in churches, in and out of churches, uh, a lot of the officers, is something when we can't talk to one another. It's always gonna be something that we don't agree with. But if we can't make a statement, regardless of how it was handled over this, we agree with it, and people are infuriated in jobs, then how can we get back together to make this, uh, put this community back to unity? And if I have to come and an officer pulls me up after I come out of church and say, well, this happened, but I don't feel comfortable saying it because of the retaliation, I think that's sad, and I'm in agreement with this.
Thank you.
Reverend Tyler Brown, I represent, uh, citizens united. I live at two twenty-two Nevada Street, South Bend, Indiana. And I'm heavily in favor of this, because it's only gonna make our city stronger when we have people that can whip some wrong. So, I hope the council will definitely pass this, and it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in behalf of substitute Bill twenty dash twelve? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is now closed.
What's a favorable recommendation, second?
Second. We've been moving seconded. All those in favor of the motion, I hear your votes?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Substitute Bill twenty dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Boyd, will you please give second reading to Board twenty-one dash twelve?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter fourteen by the inclusion of new article ten of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing smoking regulation.
Is there a committee report?
The Health and Public Safety Committee had a public hearing on Bill twenty-one twelve and had a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a presenter?
Yes, I'll just do this from here, if you don't mind. Uh, well, yeah, then it's a
Thank you, ma'am.
Dave Warner, one three oh six Cleveland Drive, just a council representative. Uh, Bill twenty-one twelve takes the newly enacted, uh, newly enforced state law with regards to smoking, uh, in non-smoking circumstances, and is a step, uh, I think in the right direction. Uh, twenty-one twelve is gonna take it a step further in its requirements of signage, which is uniform, with regards to appearance, minimum size, and, uh, A by D, I believe, uh, and, uh, uh, areas where, places where, or facilities or establishments where people smoke, so that anyone choosing to go in there is well aware of the fact that there's an active smoking establishment. The uniformity of the sign, uh, is simply a red cigarette appearance with a blue background. It should be obvious once people are aware of that, uh, that that's exactly what it is. It can be downloaded, uh, at no cost, uh, on the website from the state, and it can be utilized or, or recognized by anyone who sees it going forward. This isn't exactly the enhancement in the state legislative, uh, process that some people, uh, would like to see, but I think ultimately this allows people adults to make their own decisions, uh, whether or not to occupy a building where smoking is, is allowed. Uh, going forward with that, uh, we let folks make the decision rather than have government make decisions for them. So, I would appreciate your support for this and, uh, turn it back to the, uh, chair. Thank you, ma'am.
Are there any questions or comments at this time, council members? Councilmember Furley?
Sure. Just want to make a quick comment. Uh, certainly commend Dr. Warner for his efforts, uh, to strengthen the, uh, state smoking law. Um, I unfortunately won't, won't be able to support it. I feel some businesses, uh, may pursue more attractive signage, uniform signage. I know there is a, a no cost alternative available. Uh, however, I fear that some individuals will pursue more attractive signage, uh, and since, uh, I am supportive of a much more comprehensive, uh, smoking ban, uh, that would later eliminate the need for that signage. Uh, I wouldn't want businesses to incur an extra expense if a more comprehensive ban were to take effect.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
I do like to thank Dr. Warner for his effort, uh, to enhance the, uh, state ban that went into effect, uh, July first. Um, I also, though, will not be supporting this bill. I am an advocate for a more comprehensive, uh, bill. As, um, this discussion has been going on for the past two months, I think the, um, basic question has centered around what is government's role? Um, and I know that that's a philosophical question for many, but I do believe government does have a role in advocating, uh, or protecting, um, being a part of the public health, uh, questions pertaining to public health. Um, I know in conversations with many, uh, people have told me tobacco is an illegal product and people should be able to use it as they choose. Uh, alcohol is too, but government does have laws as to who you can sell and serve counsel to. So, in much the same way, I think, um, the, uh, more comprehensive bill will, uh, be working towards, um, improving public health by protecting those that have to work in these environments. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dean?
Uh, I will also not be able to support this, uh, bill. Um, I think there's not only a moral incentive by the hypocritical oath that I took to protect the health, but also, um, I'm concerned about the economic impact that this has. When I have to anticipate somebody's leg at two o'clock in the morning, um, it is not a good thing. When a pulmonologist is called at two o'clock in the morning to put a person on a ventilator, it is not a good thing because of smoking. And unless the smoker bonds himself out or ensures himself, uh, I don't want to be stuck with the economic cost of this.
Thank you. At this time, we, uh, councilmember Davis, I want to go to the public hearing.
If, if this stage the, uh, city council calls for questions, council members, not to say them.
Thank you.
Yeah. We will have, we'll come back to your statements. We'll go now to the public hearing portion. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-one dash twelve, speaking in favor. Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. Councilmembers, at this point, excuse me. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll speak louder. At this point, uh, I'm not gonna go back all the way through the beginning, I'll go back to the public hearing portion. Okay, excuse me. At this point, we're gonna be moving to the public hearing portion. I thought you couldn't hear me. Okay, at this point, excuse me, excuse me, I'm in the chair. Any comments that you would like to make, you can make it to the podium. At this point, we will be moving to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in favor of this bill? Seeing no one. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. We're now at the council portion. Councilmembers, if you'd like to make any comments that you have not made, now is the time. I do ask that you speak up very clearly so that everyone can hear your comments. At this time, councilmember Oliver Davis.
Uh, thank you. Chairwoman White, I was the supporting of Dr. Brian's bill. I think that the way he outlined it, will not add the cost that you are hearing about, my dear colleagues, because you can download the information. If a company wants to have a more fancy, um, download, they can go ahead and do that themselves, and that's their own choice to do that. Um, I'm glad that Dr. Warner has made the steps to the fore. I think if those who were looking for a more comprehensive, um, kind of a bill, would really believe in comprehensive, they would definitely support Dr. Warner's bill, because Dr. Warner's bill is a move towards that. And, um, it also allows for us to take the time to go and not just regulate the government by ourselves, by our peer, but I would applaud and the council, all of us here, to continue to go and talk to borrowers and everyone that I've been able to talk to, and have a meeting. Now, we should not legislate without taking the time to go and talk to people who will be directly affected. I heard that some of my colleagues were not much ready, uh, be concerned about the cost, but they were not concerned about the cost when my colleagues were losing money and not supplying any kind of loophole. We should not regulate behaviors on money or things from here for business and suck the business pockets without giving them some kind of provision on how to regain that kind of funding and how to help to do that. And seeing studies, I've got studies from all over the country, bless our hearts, I'm educating myself, but that doesn't help with mom and pop, and they have to make those ends of needs from here. Now, we go ahead and, and cut out all the things with, with, um, um, drinking and everything else you keep going and doing, the wet and dry and all that kind of stuff. So, we also have some choice up here. And so, from, I will be supporting proudly Dr. Warner's, um, deal, uh, thanking for taking the time to do that.
Uh, what's a favorable recommendation?
Have you moved a second in? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, Bill twenty-one dash twelve will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill twenty-four dash twelve.
Motion, uh, we, uh, continue with twenty-four twelve, but
Second.
Substitute
It's been moved a second, we will continue substitute Bill twenty-four dash twelve and generally answer questions by the petitioner. All those in favor of the motion, I hear your votes?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Well, uh, uh-huh.
Yes.
That council trying to explain what that means, for the crowd, so you can continue indefinitely. How am I be able to be brought back to the council?
When the bill is continued indefinitely, it must appear under an unfinished system of future company. At that point, the council by majority vote will make specific procedure.
So, it has to be seen five votes before the beginning, so go back on the, on the end of the, if we see five votes, what happens?
It stays in there.
And that does not end at the calendar year, that continues from council to council, or what?
Uh, again, typically, if the bill is still pending in committee, the city court council is permitted to the attention of the council at the public committee following the ordinance date coming in January, and the council by majority vote will turn it on.
So, that will be decided in January, possibly, how that will be determined. So, thank you.
At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion, right, continuing at the heart. If you move a second, all those in favor of them, I hear your votes?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Okay.
For Councilor Val, in session, Mr. Boyd, seventy-one twelve. Third reading on a bill that vacates following describes property, the first east west alley north of LaSalle Street, from Hill Street West to the first north south alley.
Go with the passage of thirty-one twelve.
Second.
Go, please.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine, nine.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter twenty-one of the South Bend Municipal Code, Article Nine, Administration, Section Twenty-one dash zero nine point zero five, Development Review Procedures, in order to add new section H, combined public hearing procedures.
Move to the passage of that case, Paul. Thank you. Boarding.
Mr. Davis.
Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Nine, nine.
Thank you, thirty-twelve.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating an additional one hundred thousand dollars in city, city general fund number one oh one code enforcement department for illegal dumping cleanup activities to be performed by solid waste department and reimbursed from general fund one oh one to solid waste operating fund six ten in twenty twelve.
Move a passage of Bill thirty-nine twelve.
Second. Boarding.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Nine, nine.
Thank you.
Thirty-twelve, please. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating an additional one hundred thousand dollars in city general fund one oh one code enforcement department for illegal dumping cleanup activities.
I think we just did it, uh, okay.
Twenty-six, sorry about that, twenty-four.
Twenty, twelve.
Congress, all yours.
Uh, it was the president's fault, he missed.
Yeah. Uh, wait, wait, wait. Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter two, article eight, by the inclusion of new section two dash one twenty-five point one of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing whistleblower protection.
Motion to hear the amended version.
So, move.
Second.
On the favor of that.
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the amended version?
Motion for the passage of substitute twenty-four.
Second. Boarding.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
And President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine, nine.
Thank you, twenty-one twelve.
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter fourteen by the inclusion of new article ten of the South Bend Municipal Code addressing smoking regulation.
Move to the passage of Bill twenty-one twelve.
Second.
Motion to second, Mr. Boarding.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Nay.
Dr. Furley.
Nay.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Uh, passes by a vote of six to three.
Thank you. Proceeding to resolution, well, fifty-four.
Well, fifty-four, resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend approving petition of the area board of zoning appeal for the property located at five oh eight and five twelve West Colfax Avenue, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I believe we had a committee report earlier. The zoning and space committee met this afternoon, and we bring this bill to the lookout for a favorable report.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Uh, Mark lines the building apartment opposite of twenty twenty-five South Lafayette Boulevard. There's a special exception request to allow commercial parking lot in mixed use districts given public hearing at the June sixth, two thousand twelve meeting of the area board of zoning appeals. I mean, it's conjunctional with the renovation of the Rushton Apartments, and it comes with a favorable recommendation. Have any questions you may have?
I don't believe so.
Excellent report.
Thank you, presenter. Short synopsis of your project, please.
My name's Marco Mariani, Executive Director of South Bend Heritage Foundation, with offices at eight oh three Lincoln Way West. This is a special exception for parking lot that we're planning to use for the Rushton Senior Housing Apartments, twenty-three units. Uh, this parking lot is critical to this development. We look forward to it being an asset for the neighborhood. Uh, these are longstanding vacant lots, uh, as well as a building that's on the site that we plan to use as part of the, uh, parking lot as well. Uh, so we'd ask for your approval of this request. Uh, I'd also just mention that for the record earlier today, I did submit a letter of support from, uh, Donnie and Andrea Rogers from Grassroots Media, who are large property owners adjacent to the Rushton and, uh, near the parking lot. Be happy to answer any of your questions.
Questions? We do not have any. Therefore, anyone from the public would like to speak in favor of twelve fifty-four? Counsel, before someone makes a motion, uh, Mr. Ryan, I think if, uh, again, that's specifically of, of a building, we did get the permits of the properties to the west there, and I will get in contact with the, uh, city interim city attorney.
get in contact with the, uh, interim city attorney and the staff as regards to what is going to have on the ownership of that. I don't want those buildings to become a problem for the tenants. Who live there, parking them there, even though we're not telling, I don't want a lot of stuff coming into that parking lot, which will happen, so I'll follow up, this is part of the record. Thank you. Motion. Move for the adoption of Bill number twelve to the floor. Second. Motion, the second, Mr. Wardy. Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Doctor Furley.
Aye.
Doctor Varners.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Nine, nine. Thank you. Mr. President, I've motioned to continue to eight thirteen, the twelve fifty-two. Second. Motion, the second, I'm in favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? Bill, first reading, thirty-two twelve. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at fourteen forty-one North Michigan Street, Councilman District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I move a bill thirty-two dash twelve to be sent to area plan.
Second. Motion, the second, I'm in favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, thirty-three twelve. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at the right of way of fourteen forty-one North Michigan Street, Councilman District Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Move the thirty-two twelve, the area plan commission. Second. Motion, the second, I'm in favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thirty-fourth one. First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at seven oh nine, seven eleven Lincoln Way East, South Bend, Councilman District Number Two, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I move a bill thirty-four dash twelve to be sent to area plan.
Second. Motion, the second, I'm in favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Thirty-five twelve. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance and establishing a historic landmark status for the structure and real property known as the Avon Theater and located at three oh seven South Michigan Street in the city of South Bend, Indiana. They have a motion to send this to the historic preservation. The move. Second. Motion, the second, I'm in favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Thirty-six twelve. First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter six, Article One, Section Six dash four point one, four, of the South Bend Municipal Code to adjust fire department commercial plan review fee. Will this, uh, thirty-six twelve go to public works, property vacation committee? Thank you.
Uh, this is recommended to go to public works because all of the other building fees from Drs. Varners' committee have given one consistent rate.
As opposed to.
Because it's a joint process from the building department and the private department.
So, we have a motion to send that, Dr. Varners' committee, from eighteen thirteen. Second, this is by Oliver Davis, the vice president. I'm in favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any unfinished business before this council?
Sure, I want to ask you a question. I'm not clear on what happened, but I've received a mail, uh, mail in, uh, for the, uh, parking lot that the city was supposed to be clean through the, uh, the central high school, I mean, one of the students. But I didn't receive one. And I, my mind's been a lot because I don't even know where this parking lot really is located, and also, I'm wanting to know if that's actually something that's on the table. So, I don't know, that's something that's going on right now. The last thing I want to see here, we go back to federal court again, like we were last year, so, that's definitely why I'm asking, putting it down now.
Uh, okay, and I don't know if you have some things I would invite you to our council attorney. I have the copy. I also received the copy of the mail and can confirm that whenever, at this point. Okay. All right, any other unfinished business?
I would not be at the redevelopment commission hearing to come in Florida. I would be asking, one out of town, and that's why I.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Any new business before this council? Okay. Now, may I have a motion for twelve sixty-three? Will this be sent to the, uh, the ED committee for, uh, the name of eight thirteen?
Second.
Motion, the second, I'm in favor of that.
Aye.
Any opposition? I have motion for Bill twenty-two twelve to go to ZNA for eight thirteen. Someone? Second. There's motion, the second, for that, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposition? Now, we're in privilege of the floor, privilege of the floor, the opportunity to go up to our podium, you need your name and address, you may speak for about three minutes on something that is not talked about this evening. If you want the council to specifically second or something, I believe, sir, Wardy has forms, uh, you would fill out your name, address, and the complaint or issue you have, and someone from one of the committees would contact you back again. Your time up at the podium is yours alone, there's no conversation between the council. Anybody want to talk to us? First is the councilman Scott.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My name is Kevin Brown, I'm, uh, in item two two two, Eastern Bar Street, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, I'm also the chairman, the chairman for a better government. I sent, uh, uh, mayor, Mr. Pete Booty Jack, I also sent, uh, fourth district councilman, Doctor Furley, a letter. Uh, don't know whether to receive it or not, uh, don't know whether to mail it or receive it or not, but I have to move on to what I need to do tonight. Uh, it was regarding, um, a comment that was made and brought to my attention in chamber, I guess, or after one of the meetings. And I didn't read briefly, um, there's merit sent to them, and I, uh, I was very disappointed by some of the comments I received across my desk. And let us state like this, as we're viewing press reports regarding the complaint filed by second district councilman Henry Davis and the fourth district councilman Doctor Furley and interim chief Hurley, CUGB made a request of access to public records and asked for a copy of the same. As a result of this request, a five-step package of complaint was provided to CUGB. As we reviewed the complaint, we were both deeply dismayed and greatly concerned, and we are dismayed about the comments and complaints as that relates to South Bend Police Chief, interim Police Chief Hurley, and the city is turning, confronting, and addressing a very disturbing allegation, unethical, racist, and possible criminal conviction of law enforcement officials. Allegations and unethical possible conviction enforced officials purpose on a fact check which has the general duty of protecting justice. In addition, CUGB, we see supposed to top entry, city council committee expressed in our concern regarding the several racism surrounding the city of South Bend and municipal citizens, which was later reversed, uh, by the people of private, ethnic, and migrant workers from Hagerloke Highway and Avenue. We are very concerned now only by their racial insensitivity, jokes. How many? Thirty. Okay. I'm gonna have to, uh, come back to this because it's kind of missing, but I will be back with this at another time.
We can follow you. I think we can keep up.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, wait. I know, uh, thank you.
Okay. Jesse Davis, thirteen thirty-three, East Calor Street. Uh, first off, I wanted to make sure that we, uh, stay, that the council tries to stay on top of the, uh, issue with, uh, Spoffacer Stilt, I believe his name was, who had been threatened and so forth. Haven't seen much or heard much about that, um, as well as, you know, they have talked about seeking a new police chief. And, uh, also have some information that, uh, supposedly the city signed a contract with, uh, Gary Jalock for consultation. Um, Santa came to give an amount or a length of the contract, so I was wondering if maybe the council could look into that for me. Um, I know he retired in December, supposedly, he's been on as a volunteer, and, uh, considering the matter stated earlier that, you know, budget processes are there, and, you know, we've got a pretty tight budget for a couple of years, um, I'm not sure where the money's coming from to hire someone in as a consultant, and I do know that they agreed to up the salary for the, uh, director of public work so that we could attract someone who was capable of doing that job and, uh, so forth, so I'm not sure what the, uh, consultant would be needed for at this point in time, and I was just wondering if maybe the council could look into that for me.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Joseph Wolfing, I'm at twenty-four oh five Erskine Boulevard. Uh, just a couple of, of things, um, I'm a, uh, councilman, um, Henry Davis, uh, junior. Unfortunately, officer morale and citizen, uh, trust within, uh, the community of our police force, uh, has been going on, has been low, much longer than since February. Um, and it doesn't stem just from the, um, situations, uh, with former chief agents. Pilot ground in the city has been a problem for, um, many decades, and it encompasses all quarters of South Bend. If you go pretty much two-block type of any neighborhood within South Bend, you're going to find, uh, situation within the community. Um, you'll find vacant homes, or vacant homes on my block, um, Erskine Boulevard is a nice area, um, but there are vacant homes in, you know, two blocks over, uh, any direction, um, you're going to find troubles. But as you said in other forums, um, there's going to be community involvement, um, and I highly commend you with that. Your conversations with other citizens, um, though there are some on, on those conversations that don't, um, give you much praise at all, uh, I do want to commend you, uh, in your efforts of seeking other measures within the community and go through, getting face measures, uh, or getting council members or coordinator systems involved, uh, it's highly commendable, and, uh, other things I think we could do is also look at, um, because most of our students, at least currently, are, um, juveniles, um, and I think utilizing our school resource officers, um, is an opportunity for us to make see them, uh, much more intimate, uh, basis that we can utilize those persons than to, to affect that within parental involvement, uh, much more so within, uh, with our schools, and making it more of an effort with our, with our face-based communities as well, too. One thing I do have, uh, high disagreement with you, uh, was the statements that you made, uh, on, over the airwaves, um, I believe it was this morning or yesterday morning, uh, regarding firearms. Um, even though we have a high incidence, um, of persons being hurt, uh, killed, um, especially at late with, with firearms, uh, persons that are doing this we see more often than not.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Are, are those that are not legally, um, obtained. Um, I think that the comments of alluding to gun registrations, um, is not thorough, is not thoroughly thought through, um, I think this is something that would greatly affect those about the taking great pains and efforts to obtain legally owned firearms and legally, um, obtain permits. And there's other measures that I think that we can, uh, come to that will be effective.
Thank you.
Reverend Greg Brown, twelve thirty, diamond. On Saturdays, I got a team of Christians that walk with me called the God Squad. We're on every side of the city. We've been out there twenty weeks now, seeking peace and talking to the youth and talking to them. But the breakdown in the community is people don't know the proper way of contacting, and there's questions they want to ask. When does the police department use force? Uh, several phone calls the other night after this gentleman died. Why wasn't it right on the news? Why wasn't Metro homicide? And what's the protocol far as when you have someone? I mean, right now, I might be the nicest guy, but I have bad days, not just because I'm a kickboxer, but if I had a hard day, Mr. Dieter, it'd take more than them two to get me. I'm kind of hard to handle, but when do you make that call of being hard to handle and easy to deal with? So, as putting the community, trying to build the morale, they won't question the answers. If something's happening and you jump on a gentleman, can you come into the board and listen to the, the boards when they make a decision, what's handled right? When, how long do you have with that? Do we carry it out like we're doing the tapes? Do you keep carrying it out? Living in this community and seeing the things that are happening, being a youth minister, got a preacher behind me here, he's out doing his side, I'm doing my side, and being in the schools, we got to get to a media where we can deal with this together. And if we can't come together and learn to agree to disagree, it's going to always be a problem. It's not going to be always everything that happened, the mayor's fault, the city council board's fault, but we got to get to a media where it ain't just, your preachers ain't doing enough, because the guys shooting these guns ain't in my church field. So, we got to get to a media, or how are we going to do it? I, uh, addressed the council board several months ago when Walmart started selling assault ammunition and handguns. Nobody wanted to hear me then, but they sent the attorney up to address me, why are you so concerned? You're a big guy. Well, I'm concerned because now they're selling ammunition, and we're at an all-time high of murders and shootings and killing. I think it needs to be readdressed.
Thank you. You?
Cherry Farm, nine fourteen, North Brookfield. Uh, pastor church on Lincoln Way West, here in the city of South Bend, and, um, at a few of these meetings and in other meetings, uh, I continue to hear about, uh, leaders coming up with comprehensive strategies, uh, to, uh, help against the youth violence. If we continue into coming up with comprehensive strategies and all this time, we got the wrong people strategizing. First of all, I like to say that, um, I applaud what they're doing, and anybody else that's trying to make a difference in this city. You know, I'm out here on a regular, most of the people up here know me or have seen me, uh, we do an outreach at our ministry from ten PM to one AM. I don't see a lot of the leaders out at that time. I'm at the practice center every Friday night with kids from nine PM to eleven PM. You know, we welcome leaders to come in and share, um, with different avenues that kids can take, you know, uh, to get their lives back on track. I don't have a big group to walk around with, I'm, I'm not a native of South Bend, I've been here five years, but I walk the streets by myself, hit the blocks by myself, I talk to people by myself, but more than anything, I get a chance to listen to these people. You know, uh, yesterday, I took forty-six phone calls about one subject. Forty-six phone calls about one subject, and it hurt me that I really didn't have an answer for them, because some of the things, it seems like that, that need to be exposed, we keep them under wraps, and people want answers when certain things go on in our city. You know, well, what's happening out here with these kids? We need to tap into the people that's out there, that's getting out there, that's getting in the trenches, that know what's really going on, that see what's really going on, and listen to them so we can get some real change, some real cure to the, this, this disease that's going on, this, this crime that's going on. Everything is not because of poverty, everything is not because of single-parent homes, a lot of it is that, one, we're not listening to people, we're not getting into the communities